Greg, I see we're recording and at 6:00. Are we ready to go?
Yes, we are, Mayor Bynum.
Great, thank you very much. It is Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, 6:00 PM, and this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting. I'll call us to order. And the first thing that we do is the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, our youth city councillor Gunnison Clamp will lead us in the pledge. Feel free to say it along, and yet we find it does work best if you mute yourself. And if you're going to stand up, you might also consider turning off your video so we don't get a good look at your belly button. So with that, I'll turn it over to our flag and to Mr. Clamp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for doing that. And now we'll have our roll call from the city clerk.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Gunnison Clamp.
Present.
All city councillors and our youth council representative are present.
Great, thank you very much. So tonight, I want to thank anyone who's joining us and listening live. If you are on Charter Cable TV, you are able to hear us tonight but not see us. And that is a bug that Charter is working on with the weather in Texas. If you're on Elevate, you can see and hear us. And regardless, we are recording this session, and we will post it to the city's YouTube channel for anyone that likes to watch later. But if you are tuning into your cable tonight, you won't be able to see us. And that, we're sorry about that. It's more of a system-wide problem than just a city problem. But you can view the session and all of the screen shares if you want to watch on the city's YouTube channel. So that being said, I'm so excited that Commissioner Sue Hansen is here tonight to join me. The city and the county have a joint proclamation in honor of Jim Austin Day. And tonight, we're going to read the charter from me as the mayor of the city. And then tomorrow's Board of County Commissioners meeting, Chair Hansen will read the same proclamation on behalf of the county. And I think that's really exciting. Commissioner Hansen, do you want to say anything before I get started with the formal wherethes?
No, I just wanted to say, you know, Councilman Bowman and I, I think, did a proclamation some years ago. And the spirit of having the city and the county do this together, I think, is really notable. And I think Jim Austin, each of us has a story to tell about Jim Austin and your relationship with Jim Austin. Some loved him, some didn't have that same affinity for him. For me, he was the mentor that challenged me, and I like a challenge. And you never knew what you were going to get when you faced him. But he is, for some reason, this really hit me hard. Somebody that would, has been a visionary such as Jim Austin. So for me, I'm really glad we are doing this joint proclamation. So thank you, Mayor, for considering doing that. So it demonstrates the partnership and the greater description of our community. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And with no further ado, I will read this proclamation from the Montrose County and the City of Montrose, declaring February 17th as Jim Austin Day. Whereas the Montrose community is mourning the loss of longtime community visionary Jim Austin, who passed away on February 2nd, 2021, at the age of 84. And whereas the City of Montrose and Montrose County desire to jointly celebrate and memorialize the significant contribution of Mr. Austin. And whereas Mr. Austin served as city manager for the City of Montrose from 1971 to 1980, was the advocate for the relocation of Russell Stover Candy Factory in 1973, and will also be remembered as a hands-on city manager who always made time to check in with each city department and meet with each city employee. And whereas Mr. Austin's vision and problem-solving approach to economic growth continued until his death, never veriff for ideas, Mr. Austin championed a new idea of a regional corridor that would create jobs and educational opportunities for our youth in Montrose County. And whereas Mr. Austin represented the city during negotiations of the Tri-County Dallas Creek Project in 1977 to build the Ridgeway Dam and Reservoir in an effort to secure water for the Uncompadre Valley, including the City of Montrose. And whereas Mr. Austin was a popular figure around Montrose throughout his life, always ready to share a story, hold one to account, and challenge leaders to be brave and visionary. Mr. Austin's departure leaves a huge void for all that knew him. Mr. Austin will be greatly missed by his community. And now therefore, I, Mayor Barbara Bynum, and the Montrose City Council, and Chair Sue Hansen and the Montrose County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 17th, 2021, as Jim Austin Day in the city and county of Montrose, Colorado. We honor Mr. Austin for his years of service to the city and the county of Montrose and to the citizens of our community. I miss him, but I sure do smile when I think about him and his stories and his way of reflecting on our community. Would anyone else like to say anything? I don't want to cut anyone short from saying anything about Mr. Austin.
Well, he coached me a lot after I was elected. And when it became my turn to become mayor, he challenged me a lot. He gave me lots of advice, pointers, and it was coaching that was really valuable. And I'll always remember him. He always had a good joke, too. So it was lots of fun to go to lunch with him and learn something new every time that I talked to him. So he'll be missed greatly.
He will be. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Hansen, for joining us tonight. I agree with you. It's great that the city and the county can acknowledge him together. Thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is our call for public comment for non-agenda items. So is there anyone in our attendees tonight who are wishing to speak to city council about anything that is not on our agenda for tonight? This is your opportunity. I am not seeing any hands go up for public comment from our attendees or panelists. So we'll move right along. The next item on our agenda tonight is approval of minutes. And these are council consideration of the minutes from February 2nd, 2021, regular city council meeting and the February 4th, 2021, special city council meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021, regular city council meeting and the February 4th, 2021, special council meeting as presented.
Seconded.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, so I'll call for a vote.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda tonight is the number seven, fermented malt beverage liquor license transfer, Alta number 6126. And this is council consideration of the transfer of a fermented malt beverage license at 938 South Townsend Avenue from Peaster Marketing Company, doing business as Alta 6126, to CF Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta 6126, for consumption off of the licensed premises. And I will turn it over to our city attorney, Stephen Alcorn.
So Greg and Lisa, Kevin Coats, Heather Baird, and Dennis Durski, if they're in the audience, should probably be promoted at this time.
Sure, we've got two of them already promoted that have joined us. Dennis and Heather are both here.
And I think Kevin Coats is the attorney.
Kevin's having trouble getting any text. He just a minute ago. But I mean, we can move forward if you'd like.
I would hate to mess up billable hours.
Exactly.
I've got Kevin on the phone while he's trying to figure out how to connect. So Kevin, say hi.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to hear him like that. He needs to use the Zoom link at the top of our agenda or the call-in, which I didn't print out. But he can call in by phone. And that information to call in by phone is, and this would apply not only to your attorney but anyone from the public to call in tonight to participate. That number would be, you can join by phone at 669-900-9128. And our webinar ID tonight is 853-6198-9930. So anyone wishing to join us by phone tonight, that would be possible.
So as he's dialing in, so this is a different type of here, or a different type of liquor action for council, because this is a transfer. So there's no hearing, no moral, no moral character component. Only city council approval is needed. So I think it's probably going to be best, we'll see if Kevin is able to join us. But if Dennis and/or Heather can kind of explain what's going on, you know, why is a transfer? And then we can talk a little bit about council's biggest concern, especially in a operation like this, which is sale underage. And we can address that concern. And it does look like Kevin is probably joining us here. So Dennis, do you want to tell us a little bit about why a transfer is taking place? Who's going to own what and how this?
And if I might, Kevin Coats, did I just get in?
Yes, he did.
You are now at our city council meeting. Welcome.
I'm so sorry, and I'm not sure why I decided tonight not to work here, the computer. But thank you for hearing from me. And I heard quite a bit of what it is that you said. So I will turn this over to Dennis to talk about those things I think he just said, and that is operationally day-to-day. But what I'll let you know is occurring here is essentially, CF Altitude LLC purchased all the assets of Peaster Marketing and a transaction occurred on January 15th. And there was about 92 locations here in the state of Colorado, convenience stores, 75 of which had fermented malt beverage off-premise class licenses. And this is one of them. We did file the application and obtain the temporary permit, been operating without any issues associated with a temporary permit. But with respect to the issues of the ownership, it's essentially a process in which CF Altitude LLC is up the chain, is owned by both Phillips 66 and Fortress Investment Group. And you have two individuals on your master file letter, that being Randall Fralix from the Phillips 66 side, as well as Greg Shoemaker from the Fortress side. But those individuals have been vetted by the state on the master file letter, and there's no issues associated with their moral character. That explains essentially the ownership of the transaction. But on a day-to-day basis, part of the assets were the employees that were working for Peaster. So Mr. Durski, who's present, came over as vice president. He's now vice president of CF Altitude, as well as we have the area manager, and the manager at the location is the same manager. So I just wanted to tell you that from the standpoint of the change in ownership structure, there's no issue associated with the moral character of the applicant, which is the criteria essentially for a transfer. And that's been vetted by the state. But certainly, I can answer any questions associated with the transaction. But you're right, Mr. Durski, their president, can certainly answer any questions associated with a day-to-day operation, which nothing's changing with. And again, my apologies for having to do this by phone. I haven't been in this situation before. And so again, I'm sorry that I can't see your faces.
No worries. If there's anything we've learned in the last 11 months, it's to be flexible and to pivot and to keep the ball rolling. So thank you for picking up the phone. We're glad to have you. And that was a great explanation to our council of what's going on here.
Okay, Dennis, why don't you talk a little bit about your operations? Focus in on what you do to discourage or prevent sales to minors? And talk about any point of sales system you may have, or how IDs are checked, that type of thing. I think that with this type of operation, you know, we're pretty concerned about, especially that close to the high school, people, kids coming in, doing a snatch and grab or fake IDs, all that type of stuff. Though we have fantastic kids in Montrose. I'm not going to say that some aren't tempted. So we want to try and make them easy to be the good kids they are basically wanting to be.
All right, thank you. I think I was there probably two years ago, and it was a little different. I got to see everybody in person. So this is kind of strange doing it this late. But this is how it is in these times. I didn't know if you needed me to read my name and address into the record, or let me just kind of go?
I think our city clerk loves it when you do that. And Zoom, we're sometimes forgetting to do that.
Okay, so my name is Dennis Durski, and spelled, my last name is spelled B-I-R-K-S-E. And I live at 1239 West Lone Cowboy Drive in Pueblo West, Colorado. I'm the vice president of retail operations for CF Altitude, and I was the vice president of operations for Peaster Marketing. We're applying for a transfer of the permitted malt beverage off-premise beer license. Just a little bit about some background with me. I've been in the business for 34 years and in a position to sell alcohol for many of them. Heather, who is our area sales manager, and she's also on the call if you had questions for her, has been in the business for 14 years, and she's a multi-store supervisor. We currently have 106 stores with over 700 employees. And we currently have 87 licenses in the company and 75 in Colorado. We have read the Colorado Beer Code. We are familiar with the Colorado Beer Code. Legal drinking age of 21 years old, current age to sell is 18 years of age. Hours, we are able to sell 8:00 AM to midnight. Types of acceptable identification, and it must not be expired, is a state-issued driver's license, state-issued ID card, military identification card, a passport, an alien registration card, and as of October 30th of 2018, a digital ID. Now, the digital ID, we're not quite there, ready to take that. And I don't think we have the good training for that, enough training for that. We're working towards that so we can get in compliance with everything. But right now, we're requiring a hard ID, even though they have the digital. Our outlet operation, this particular site is a 24-hour site. And in all of our 24-hour sites, we have locks that go on the beer doors. The store currently has eight employees. The beer is located in view of the cashier at the register. Our passport cash register system will scan IDs. As for our employee training, our preferred training is the TIPS program, which is a state program. In these times, it's been a little bit harder to get people through this. So we have a secondary program that we've always run, and it's called Techniques of Alcohol Management, which is specific to the convenience store business. It's about a 45-minute class that we have all of our people go through. And we often use that as a bridge between TIPS training. So if we have a new hire come in and there's not available training, we make them go through that before they even touch a register or buy a bottle. We are also a member of the bars program. And the bars program, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it or not, but basically what they do is they, it's a company we outsource, and they come into every one of our stores every month, once for tobacco, once for alcohol. And they send somebody in that's between the ages of 21 and 26. A cashier, if they come in and they sell to the person, the cashier receives a red card. And then if they don't, they get a green card. The first red card, if somebody gets one, they go back through training. And then there's also corrective action. If they get a second card, that's when we're determining if they need to be with us or not. If they get a green card, on the other hand, we like to reward our employees for doing a good job, and that's a monetary value for items in the store. In all of our stores, we ID anyone that appears to be under the age of 50. We are a member in good standing in the state of Colorado. And the final comment I'd like to make is, if we ever have an employee sell to a minor, they're immediately terminated.
So thank you for that. Madam Mayor, we are, the packet is up to standard. There's no reason from the staff's position that the council can't vote on this tonight. There isn't a need for a hearing. I could see that you may want to ask some questions before voting. But there's nothing of any concern with either the operation, the management, or the packet that would give staff any cause for concern.
Okay, thank you very much. Council members, including our youth council, do any of you have any questions or comments for our applicant or our city attorney? And it looks like their attorney has joined us as well, so he's available. Any questions about this transfer? I'm seeing heads shaking. We don't have any questions. This seems fairly straightforward. Thank you for the information about why you're seeking the transfer. It's nice to know you are able to retain the employees who know the business and know our community. And it's also great to hear of your procedures for making sure that underage kids aren't served or not, you know, able to buy alcohol. Thank you for doing all that. Mr. Anderson, did you have an interesting comment?
Can I just make a comment? I appreciate your program very much and the fact that you don't tolerate your employees selling to underage people. And that's one of the better programs that I've heard. So I compliment you on it and thank you, because we are really concerned about underage drinking here. So it sounds like a good program. Keep your employees, you know, mindful of that issue. And just thank you for the information.
Like our attorney said, we don't need to hold a hearing. But I will ask if there is any public comment on this item before we go to a motion. I do not see any public comment, so I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the transfer of a permitted malt beverage license at 938 South Townsend Avenue from Peaster Marketing Company, doing business as Alta number 6126, to CF Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta 6126, for consumption off of the licensed premises as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, so I'll ask our city clerk to call for our vote.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. And thank you to our guests who were able to join us tonight. We appreciate you being here. And thanks for being available for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, it took a while, but at least I got to show up for the end. So thank you very much. Appreciate your patience. And you folks have a wonderful night.
Absolutely. We don't want you to put a tie on for nothing. So thanks for.
Well, there you go.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, our next item tonight is item number eight, if you're following along on our agenda, which is always available with the whole packet and information on the city's website. And item eight is our automated meter infrastructure software upgrade. Mr. Breeze, I will turn it over to you to tell us more about this council consideration of the upgrade of the automated meter infrastructure software to a software-as-service purchase order with National Meter and Automation, or Badger Meter, and the award of the purchase to Mountain State's Pipe and Supply in the amount of $85,663.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is part of our automated meter reading system, our AMI, that provides us the monthly meter readings for the customers for billing. In addition to that, we also have hourly usage data through the system. So we are able to utilize that to help customers dealing with water, excessive water use issues, whether they've got leaky toilets or left a faucet on overnight, or that. We can spot those and help work through some of those issues with the customers in order to resolve those and figure out what's causing the problems. This was awarded about a little over a year ago to Badger Meter, who at that point in time was National Meter and Automation. After they switched over and were bought out by Badger Meter, Itron, which is the manager, the system, the software system that we used, didn't renew their purchase agreement with them. And Mountain State's Pipe and Supply is the current one. And so this last year, we thought that Badger Meter was working with Itron to continue this implementation. But at the end, Itron wasn't able to do that and preferred that we switch over to their current representative, which is Mountain State's Pipe and Supply. So that's what the action tonight is for, is to approve the contract with Mountain State that will replace the purchase order with National Meter, and so that we can get this upgraded. The next phase, once we get this upgraded, is to develop a customer portal, which will provide access to some of this data for the customers on their water usage. So they will be able to monitor their usage better themselves with, hopefully, with text messages and emails when they go outside of certain parameters of their normal usages. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you very much. What kinds of follow-up questions or comments does anyone on council, including youth council, have? Mr. Frank, I see your hand.
For a clarification that this is a budgeted item, and we already have this money in our 2021 budget for this?
This was not a budgeted item in the 2021 budget. It was budgeted in the 2020 budget, and we had hoped to complete it there. We did not spend that cash in 2020, and the cash carryover is available in the water fund for this.
Well, for further clarification, that it wasn't a failure on this part of the city or staff that caused this. It was the change of ownership of an outside company that made this deal not go through last year, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we had entered the purchase order to National Meter, and we're developing and developed all the files and sent them to it. They, when they sent it to Itron, apparently it didn't get action there because Itron didn't recognize them as a representative for them.
Mr. Breeze, will this be in place in time for the summer watering season? Because I think that's probably when folks are most interested in the change in their average bill. Will this customer be able to use these new features?
The customer portal process will probably not be in place by summer billing cycles or usage patterns. It probably will be near the end of the year by the time we get all of that, all of the firewalls and all of the security features to where customers can only get into their accounts and have to provide evidence and stuff to do that and get that implemented and out to the customers. I would anticipate that's probably going to be late third quarter, maybe into fourth quarter, before that's completed.
Okay, that sounds like a realistic way to approach it. Any other questions from my fellow councillors? Comments? Okay, I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to make comment about the automated meter infrastructure software upgrade. meter infrastructure software upgrade. I do not see any hands in the audience, but I'll give it just a second. I want to make sure I don't miss anyone. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments, so, um, we could have a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the upgrade of the automated meter infrastructure software to a software as a service purchase order with National Meter and Automation, um, Badger Meter, and the award of the purchase to the Mountain State's Pipe and Supply in the amount of eighty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars as presented.
Second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so we'll do a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along on our agenda tonight, the next item is number nine, which is our staff reports. Um, we have two, um, that I know of and a few more, I think that we're going to add on. Um, we have a sales use and excise tax report, so, and a fourth quarter budget review. And those are both going to come from our finance director, Shaney Wittenberg. So, I'll turn it over to her and information about both of those is in our packet, if you're following along, or I bet you she's going to share her screen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. And yes, I will share my screen so you all can see my PowerPoint. Um, I think I've got this. All right, so this is our final report for 2020, uh, presented to you tonight for sales use and excise tax collected. The general fund collects sales and use tax at three percent. December sales tax compared to December of 2019, retail sales taxes up thirteen point three percent. Construction use tax up one hundred and fifteen point eight percent. Use and auto use tax up one hundred and five point five percent with total collections up nineteen percent. A positive budget variance of twenty-one point seven percent for December. Year-to-date, our retail sales tax is up seven point seven percent or approximately one point two six million dollars. Construction use tax is at forty point one percent or a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax is up one point two percent or fifteen thousand dollars. We did have a slow start with our use and auto use tax this year. Total collections are up eight percent or one point four six million dollars for the year. Budget variance was still a positive ten point four percent or one point eight five million dollars for the year. Public safety sales and use tax adds point five eight percent to that three percent and it's dedicated to public safety functions. In December, we collected four hundred and nineteen thousand seventeen dollars. And year-to-date, the budget variance is up eleven point two percent or three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars more was collected than we anticipated when we put this budget together. The Montrose Recreation District, this tax adds point three percent to our three percent. So, our total sales tax for the city of Montrose is collected at three point eight eight percent. And this tax is dedicated to the Community Recreation Center. In December, we collected two hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars or nineteen percent more than we did in December of 2019. Year-to-date collections, almost two million dollars or eight percent more than we collected in 2019. Excise taxes, this adds point nine percent to our sales tax and point eight percent to our sales tax for hotels and restaurants. This is becoming a very familiar slide with you all with all this red and the, the down arrow. Um, December excise taxes for hotel excise tax is down two point four percent. Restaurant excise tax is down seven percent with total collections down six point four percent. A budget variance of a negative two point nine percent. Not as bad as it could have been, but not great. Year-to-date collections compared to 2019, seventeen point two percent down for hotel excise tax or about twenty thousand dollars. Two point six percent down for restaurant excise tax or twelve pers- twelve thousand dollars, with the total being down five point five percent or thirty-two thousand dollars for the year. A negative budget variance of two point three percent or approximately thirteen thousand dollars was not collected in 2020, um, that we anticipated and would have put us at the 2019 level. Retail sales enhancement, in 1990, vendors agreed to give up a portion of their fee for, um, the city to market downtown business, or actually all businesses. In twenty, in December, we collected fifty thousand nine hundred and six dollars towards this program or sixty-four point four percent more than we did in December of 2019. Remember that the public safety sales tax went into effect in 2020, so that number was larger that they were calculating their, um, retail sales fee for. Year-to-date collections, four hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars or twenty-eight point three percent for the entire year. With that, I'll take any questions you all may have, comments?
I think, um, I think I can maybe speak for all of council, but thank you for putting together a budget that is very responsible and conservative because, um, I know there are a lot of municipalities across our state that are, um, really looking at their, that they were projecting that 2020 was going to be so much better than 2019 and when it wasn't, um, that was difficult. So, um, we saw a, a good 2020 in terms of retail sales, but we also didn't, we also budgeted conservatively. Um, and so, thank you for taking care of our budget in that regard.
You're welcome. We, we do our best.
Which is a great segue, I suppose, to the fourth quarter budget review.
Yes, it is. Um, this, this memo and, um, spreadsheets are in your packet for review. Um, I usually just kind of give you a, a big picture, um, look at this. The general fund collected a hundred and nine point three percent of its revenues and spent ninety-six point two percent. Um, keep in mind, these are unaudited numbers, so, um, I'm hopeful that most of our departments have their invoices in for 2020, but there's always those stragglers. So, these are not final numbers. Um, we just reviewed sales and use tax. Um, just want to remind everybody that we do not collect party taxes. Those sales and use taxes are a majority revenue in the general fund. And then the public safety fund did very well as far as, um, collecting a hundred and thirty percent of their revenues and only spending eighty-eight point three percent. A lot of that had to do with, um, COVID, the economy, those types of things. Um, and then the, uh, Montrose Recreation District, they're doing very well and trying to help them keep above board, if you will. They had a rough year as far as COVID went. I know their numbers are down a little bit, but the, the collection for sales tax definitely helped them. Uh, most of our capital projects that we had budgeted for 2020 are either completed or they are as complete as we expected them to be at the end of the year, such as the new public safety building. Um, those, you know, that's moving along. It's just a slow train. Um, they're doing a great job, though. I really enjoy listening to them talk every week about the progress of the building. Um, the water fund, sewer fund, term recycling fund, and Black Canyon Golf Course, those are our four enterprise funds. They all did very well in 2020. Um, you can see there where the Black Canyon Golf Course is actually up a hundred and seven point seven percent. That was mainly due to they got to stay open during COVID and they, um, did a great job of bringing people in. So, the water fund capital improvements, sewer fund capital improvements, a lot of those are the same year-to-year, trying to improve our systems the best we can. It's not something you can do in one year. So, we work hard to make sure that our infrastructure under the ground is, um, in good shape when we do anything about it. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments and if you think of them later, give me a holler. Um, so, that's, that's the fourth quarter.
I'd just like to say, what a great job. And it's always good to get those reports and you put them out so I can understand them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any comments or questions about the fourth quarter budget review? Okay, so, uh, Shaney, can I keep you? Oh, m- Mr. Frank. You're muted.
There you go. Um, I just wanted to point out again that, as we always do, that all of this information is available in the packet, that if you want to see these numbers and see these figures, that it's all available. And it's a great opportunity to see kind of where things are this year versus last year.
What a fantastic segue because I believe, Ms. Wittenberg, that our next question for you was, um, can you show us how that new financial transparency website looks? I poked around on it. It's kind of fun. You can go through the city checkbook and, and you can see, you know, seventy dollars was spent on some cuff to fit some pipe. I don't know, you can see everything. So, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Um, yes, we, we did roll out the transparency module, um, with the February, um, city, city beat newsletter. It is definitely, um, easy to use, I think. And I think at your request, I'll share my screen and kind of show you how to get into it and some of the features that it has.
That would be great, especially because when you first look at it, it's, it's really pretty looking, but it doesn't look very deep. But then you really can get into it. Um, you just need to know where to click.
Let me share my screen. Oh, yes. Um, so, you know, it's always getting to the website. Just one second. Don't know that I can do it from there. Just a second. I'll figure this out. I thought I had it. Uh, maybe I need to minimize. There we go. Okay, let's try this one more time. Maybe I've got you. Maybe I did it. Okay, so here we go. If, can you all see my screen?
Yeah, we're getting, there we go. Make that bigger because I think behind it, we were seeing all your files, so you.
Yeah, and I, I think it's really hard, um, presenting off of a laptop because you become really small and then I feel like I'm just talking to myself. Anyway, you actually go to the city's website. And once it comes up, and you go to department services, there's this link here, financial transparency module. If you click on that, it will bring up ClearGov, which is our third-party administrator of this, um, transparency module. And this is the screen you, you land on. So, the demographics snapshot, this is all updated by ClearGov on an annual basis. And right now, it's the 2018 U.S. Census Bureau information for Montrose. Um, you can actually click here and get more information about the, um, data and it goes back, you know, 2018 to 2014 and you can, you know, do lots of different things. Um, there are demographics, maybe not as many buttons to download and that type of thing. But if we go back up, go back over to the overview tab, we can then go down to the next section, which is the financial overview. This is probably where a lot of people, um, want to spend their time. There's a nice graph here at the bottom that shows the fiscal years 2015 through 2021's budget. And you can click on those. I believe you can even drill down into these, or at least you can click on them and see kind of some information. You can look at a breakdown of our expenses. Right now, we're in the general fund, so this is general fund expenses. Comes up with a pie chart, so it kind of gives the major areas of the general fund for public works, administrative transfers, and then our public safety transfer. You can scroll down and see what is made up of each one of these. Um, we look at the general fund, public safety. One little caveat, and I'm still trying to work with ClearGov to put it all together, is we moved the public safety departments into its own fund. So, you'll see part of public safety from 2019 back will be in the general fund and then 2020 and 2021 are on a public safety page. So, from the general fund, if you click on the public safety, a hundred percent of it's being transferred. Um, of the transfer per our demographics, four hundred and one dollars per capita is what breaks up that seven point six million dollars. You see here where there's no data in these years, it's because we've hit this public safety fund. So, it's hitting 20, 2020 and 2021. So, I'll continue to work with ClearGov and maybe we can try to get that consolidated onto one page. I think that would be a lot easier for everybody to, to see. Let's see, when you sit, hit the patrol budget, you're just seeing the general fund portion. So, from 2015 to 2019, they were in the general fund and this is how much they were funded for, for patrol. And then it breaks it down to administration. So, there's a lot of data in here and you can really dig down deep if you want. Um, if you have questions, you can send them here. Um, this should go to the finance mail at the city. But that's kind of a quick overview. Um, let's see what else is on this main page. Got the financial overview. You can do this dropdown right here and change it so we could look at the public safety fund. Changes all the screens, but you notice down here, it doesn't have any data. That's all in the general fund. So, you could break down public safety on the public safety fund and you come up with, the graph is different. And then digging down into patrol and admin, um, you see different numbers. So, that, so this is, um, patrol and then it, you know, breaks it down into debt service. Still working with them on some of these titles. I'm not really sure what leases is right now, um, but you can see, oh, we're heavily salaries and benefits, um, in our patrol budget.
Can you answer? I mean, I think I know the answer, but when you go to the, the overview and you go down to revenue and expenses, it looks like we spend more than we bring in. Um, and, and someone might look at that and say, oh, what, how irresponsible is that? And yet, we know that's not, that's not how it actually works. It's a, it's the accounting for transferring money and whatnot. So, can you just go to that pie chart? I think it, it's, yeah, right there. And if I was a citizen looking at this and I said, that, help me understand that, what, how could you give a, a quick answer to help a citizen with that graph?
Well, I think when you're looking over here at the budgeted columns, it definitely shows the expenditures above revenues. A lot of that is because we plan to use our fund balance during our budget sessions. Um, you'll notice that if you go back here to 2019, it's the opposite and our sales tax came in higher than we anticipated and our expenditures where we thought we would spend didn't quite materialize. Now, 2017 looks like an anomaly to that. And if I can think about what we did in 2017, um, this is the general fund, so I'm not thinking it's the borrowing for the streets, but there was definitely a project in 2017 that we actually exceeded, our actual expenditures exceeded our revenues.
But, but we have that money in our, in our savings account, so to speak. We don't, we don't overspend.
No, no, no. That is absolutely correct. Right. We have a fund balance in the general fund. Um, the, the policy for our fund balance in the general fund is six months of operating expenditures. And currently, we are approximately ten months of operating expenditures instead of six. So, yes, we, we, we do, we do not overspend. We're not borrowing money to fund our operations at the city. Um, we are borrowing money for capital projects, but not for operations. And we have the debt service reflected in our expenditures.
So, even though we are showing a increase in our expenditures, uh, oftentimes, that's where we've had money put away into an account. And even though that isn't showing in our budget, that is showing as an. And even though that isn't showing in our budget, that is showing as an expenditure. Is that correct?
You might have to say that one more time.
Looking at our 2021, it shows our expenditures as being significantly over. But a lot of times, that's because we have money that we've been saving for something. And so it might not show, it doesn't show in as revenue, because it's accumulated over a period of a number of years, or is in one of our other funds, like the Water Fund, for example. So even though it, it isn't, that we don't have the money, it's just that it shows up weird, because the way the expenses show up.
Right. We don't budget, we don't actually budget for reserves, if that makes sense. These, the green line is really just what we're going to, what we anticipate collecting from sales tax or other revenues that the city might have permits, that type of thing. The construction use tax, those, those types of, but what this gap here is what we have in savings, and we consciously said we're going to transfer more to the Capital Improvement Fund in 2021, and use some of those reserves to make some of the, some of the projects in 2021 happen. Some of that includes money for street infrastructure. The Move Mo project will be, kind of took a break in 2020, but in 2021, there are more projects slated for, for those types of improvements. So yes, you are correct. They don't show up here, but we have the money in, in savings, if you will.
Yeah, so as Ma, as Mayor Bynum said, we're not just randomly spending more money than we're making.
No, no.
That's definitely right there. Thank you very much for showing us that, and, and I invite our community to take a look at it, poke around. You can't change the city's budget. You can't write checks. You can just poke around and look at stuff, so you won't, you won't hurt anything by poking and clicking. And if you have questions, we have a great city staff who'd be happy to answer your questions, so. Thanks for showing that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
And then, is Jim Scheid available? I asked him if he could talk a little bit about, it looks like he's in our attendees, if, if someone in IT can promote him to our panel. I asked him to talk a little bit about what behind-the-scenes snow removal looks like, especially when your weather forecasters tell you you're going to get an inch, and you get a lot more than one inch of snow. So, Mr. Scheid, welcome, and tell us what you can tell us about city snow removal plans.
Yeah, definitely. I was going to give an update on this last round of our, our snow ops. Yeah, I think we've learned we can't trust the weather report, definitely not entirely. Sometimes it just takes what it feels like, and a few of us know what's coming. I think this one was a good storm. I think it was a decent amount of snow. The lingering, kind of spitting, snow today is frustrating and hard to predict, but I, I just give a reminder that our, our snow removal procedures and maps are on our website at cityofmontrose.org, and you can just search for snow removal, and all of our procedures are on there. But in this storm's case, we started late Saturday night through Sunday, addressing our tier ones, twos, and threes as our, our primary routes. We also have several priority intersections that we were taking care of, school zones being part of that, and our, and some of our main trails. Monday and today, we kind of transitioned and split our crew up into picking up snow. So you might have seen our snow blower out, picking up large, the large windrows that we leave, and also hitting the residential streets, kind of getting into our tier four area. So it's kind of how we split up today to get both areas. And in this storm so far, which has been about three days total, we've used five hundred and eighty labor hours. That is almost everybody in Public Works pitched in and worked a good part of the weekend and, and nights to, to get where we're at now. We also used a little over twenty tons of salt and sand in that process, which is very selective. We don't put salt and sand everywhere. We mostly focus on priority intersections, and then we, we look for icy areas, definitely things that are shaded, and where we're starting to get some of the, the ice sheets forming. That's where we'll, we'll focus on. So it's not just spread everywhere. It's put in various strategic locations. And then we'll continue for the next couple of days at least, to continue to pick up the snow and hit our tier fours. Those are oftentimes the hardest, because there's so many of them. There, there are two hundred miles of, of residential streets that we will clear. So we'll spend the next few days continuing to pick up little pieces and addressing any ice areas that we find. But that, that's what this storm brought for us, so looking forward to the next one already.
Thank you, and thanks to all of the city workers who spent their weekend getting the snow picked up so we could all get around town. Appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Scheid about the snow removal ops? Yes, I see a hand from Mayor Proton Glass.
Yeah, Jim, you might just pass along the information if people have a problem someplace where they can notify you.
Yeah, definitely. Always welcome to call down here to Public Works. That is, that's one easy way, two four zero fourteen eighty. Or also, another quick way to get straight to the crew is our Better Montrose app. That, that works very well, is very quick. So taking a picture or just giving a location and a short description on that app, that would work as well.
Great. Good, good point. So the app or calling two four zero one four eight zero.
That's right.
Great, thanks. Appreciate the update, and looking forward to the next storm. Maybe this one will melt a little before we get the next one. I got piles of snow.
Yeah, it's supposed to. I, I bet by early next week, we're melting.
Okay. Additional staff reports. Does anyone have, anyone else on staff have an update for council about anything in particular? Okay. Thanks for being available for that, to answer my question about snow. Jim, I appreciate that. Okay, city council comments. Actually, first, before I do that, I, I meant to ask for youth council updates. So, Mr. Clamp, do you have any updates from youth council, what y'all are working on right now?
Not a whole lot. Still working on our drug prevention awareness project. I'm working on the video for that. So not a ton to report on since last time, just still moving forward with that. Last week, actually, the youth council got a really cool opportunity with a lot of the great city staff members. I believe, Madam Mayor, you were there. We got to do our mock interviews. And I'd just like to say on behalf of the council how appreciative we are of that. Things like that are, you know, they're big for people like me, who shortly will be moving, you know, into the business world. So that was a great experience for all of us, and, and thanks for everyone that could make it on the city staff for doing that. So with that, if there are any comments or questions on that or anything else, I can take those.
Any questions from council for our youth council representative tonight? Okay, I don't see any. So now we'll move on to city council comments. Anyone on council have anything they want to tell each other about, or tell our community about tonight? I think I, I see four nodding heads, all of you going like this. Okay. Then, then I will say that we can, we can wrap up this meeting. Again, I appreciate Commissioner Hanson joining us to honor our former city manager, Jim Austin, and just really appreciate that joint effort between the city and the county, putting out that proclamation. And if there is nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move by affirmation. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.